Welcome everybody to the December 5th, 2023 Board of Commissioners meeting. Please silence your cell phones, pagers, and other electronic communication devices. Agendas and speaker request forms are located at the back of the chambers. Commissioners now utilize speaker request forms, so if you'd like to speak on an item, please complete the speaker request form located on the bookshelf in the back of the chambers and returning to the Commission Manager Holly Hennies located at the lower right side of the dais. At this time, I'd ask Commissioner Hancock to do the moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Hancock. Next, we have review and approval of the agenda. We do have a request to move item 21 to follow item 14.
To move.
Moved by Mr. Drews, seconded by Mr. Lassiter. Any comments? If not, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And next, we have on our agenda is recognition of the new employees, which a lot of them have left, and we've done that. Is there any comments from the Commission on that? If not, we'll move on to the consent agenda, and I'll recognize Commission Manager Holly Hennies.
Good morning, Commissioners. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the Board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a Board member or a citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items: Approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of November 21st, 2023. Number seven is approval of the lease agreement for a room at the Pirramoid Hotel for the 2024 legislative session. Number eight is to reappoint Mr. Daniel Fields as County Constable for a two-year term in Legislative District Number 34. Number nine is to declare an HP Design Jet Z5400 printer, serial number CN47H4H01M as surplus for the purpose of disposal. Number 10 is approval of the 2024 memorandum of understanding between SDSU Extension in Pennington County. Number 11 is to declare surplus for the purpose of trade, 11994JCBBACKHO, serial number 418667, asset number 003427. Number 12 is to approve the Marketing Manager position at DVMC52, base rate pay of $3,103.20 bi-weekly, and to update the position listing on file. And finally, number 13 is to authorize 1Glock17, serial number BCHC548, to be declared a surplus for the purpose of commendation.
Thank you, Holly. At this time, are there any members of the public who wish to remove any items from the consent agenda? See none? At this time, are there any Commissioners who wish to have any items removed from the consent agenda for discussion? See none? I'd look for a motion on the consent agenda.
So move the consent agenda, Mr. Chair.
Moved by Drews, seconded by Roskinak for approval of the consent agenda. Any further discussion? See none? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, that brings us up to item 14. Items from Auditor Cindy Muller.
Good morning, Commissioners. Cindy Muller, Pennington County Auditor. We have a few alcohol beverage-related items this morning. We have a new retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license for Black Hills reception and rentals we're looking for approval on.
Is there any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I'd move to approve the new retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license for Black Hills receptions and rentals.
Second.
Moved by Drews, seconded by Roskinak. Any public comment? Any from the Commission? See none? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
The next one is the new retail on-off sale wine and cider license for Black Hills reception and rentals.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I'd make the motion to approve the new retail on-off sale wine and cider license for Black Hills receptions and rentals.
Second.
Moved by Drews, seconded by Roskinak. Any public comment? Any further from the Commission? See none? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
The last one is a transfer of an alcoholic beverage license. This is a transfer of retail on-off sale liquor with Sunday sales and a retail on-off sale malt beverage South Dakota farm license from the Humboldt Hudeck LLC to Horse Creek LLC.
Any public comment? Any from the Commission? I'd look for a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskinak.
Move to approve the transfer of the retail on-sale liquor license with Sunday sales and retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license from the Humboldt Hudeck LLC to Horse Creek LLC.
Second.
Moved by Roskinak, seconded by Drews. Any further discussion? See none? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you.
Next, we have item number 21, which we moved up to after 14. And this is from, items from the Compensation Committee. I'd call on Carol Bancroft first.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Bancroft, HR Director for Pennington County. It's my honor and privilege to introduce to you that, for the Compensation Committee, that we have the Subcommittee, which is the benefits as part of that wage study and market analysis, and it's been led by a very committed group, led by Annette Brandt, to do various research on different types of benefits which have low to no cost to the county. And so, as I said, this is my privilege to introduce Annette to share with you as far as what it is that the Committee is recommending as far as vacation and sick leave benefits. Annette.
Thank you, Carol.
Thank you, Carol. Good morning, Commissioners. Annette Brandt, Pennington County Treasurer, here representing the Comp Committee. As Chair of the Benefits Subcommittee, I'm thrilled to present this to you today for your consideration. This revised plan came in part from the poll of the county employees that HR was encouraged to send out to staff many months ago through a combined effort of our Comp Committee, Subcommittee on Benefits, Department Heads and elected officials, and chosen employees from their managers reviewing and having their say in this. It passed through the Compensation Committee unanimously at the last meeting. Kudos to our Subcommittee meeting, excuse me, to our Subcommittee meeting on this topic of research for their additional hours of work on it. They were Barry Tice, Holly Hennies, Nikki Farrar, and HR Director Carol Bancroft. And to the employees of Pennington County that took the time to enter their views that went out in the form of a poll of what they felt would make the county a long-term employer for them. After meeting together and finding out Pennington County's target years of retention issues, a plan was put into place for review by the Compensation Committee. From there, ideas were hatched and formed and enhanced. They were sent out to each of the Department Heads and elected officials for their input and for them to reach out to their staff on thoughts and suggestions. Only after that input, the Benefits Subcommittee compiled and presented back to the Compensation Committee for final approval of what you see before you for your consideration. Retention is important. Department Heads and elected officials are the ones filling the void in their departments for recruitment and retention, but so are the taxpayers of Pennington County who have grown to expect the caliber of service that comes from well-trained, long-term employees. This is not isolated to Pennington County, but well-known that the Bureau of Labor Statistics come back with their 2022 findings that the average job tenure for women was 3.8 years and 4.3 for men. Your leadership would rather have one experienced employee, well-trained, and with high tenure in front of our taxpayers rather than continually training two or three new staff members every three to four years. Over half of Pennington County employees are now in their zero-to-four-year tenure. That's 444 employees as of to date, out of 799 employees. It's been proven that it costs far more to recruit and train new employees than it does to retain your existing knowledgeable staff. Pennington County tenure of employees has decreased significantly over the last few years. Each department is feeling this in some manner or another, if not directly, indirectly, when they have to reach out to another department for assistance on the compounded tasks that take more than one department to achieve. Our goal was to find a way to foster long-term knowledgeable employees to assist the taxpayers of Pennington County, well-trained staff for quality service. We feel this plan will do just that. By alluring those early years of employment recruitment and opportunity to feel growth a bit sooner, by somewhat supplementing those vacation hours, by reducing the sick leave accrual, they will see those carrots a bit sooner, if you will. Actual caps encourage them to actually use the time they're earning for a better work-home-life balance early on in their career. By making an employee-benefited time more flexible for them to use, vacation accrual, less sick leave accrual, vacation accrues faster now than sick leave did, and before in those early years, it was the opposite. It shows them that we value the thought of wanting them to have a sound work-life balance. Adding to their accrual amount for long-term employees and leaving the cap where it is encourages use for home-life balance as well for those employees. Pennington County has managed to hold on to 20-plus years. It also encourages the department to get a succession plan in place because though we want our employees with us forever, we need their knowledge and skills passed on to others. Currently, we have a total of 53 employees that have been with us 20-plus years. Vacation usage versus sick leave usage allows for planned scheduling. Use of sick leave oftentimes comes with last-minute fill-ins resulting in overtime pay for your department heads. Out of 799 employees, we have 44 employees now that are at, that are at or near their maximum accrual rate, together with their managers within that department. We need to expect personal accountability to manage their own time as well, but the department heads can work with those employees to get them their time off as needed. Our goal to impact the budget as little as possible. Try to capture the employees within the difficult years of retention. And that's the plan that you see before you.
Go ahead, Annette.
With that, I'm open for any questions.
Thank you, Annette. And I will, this is a recommendation from the Compensation Committee, so we'll take action on this on 12/19. Is there any question, Ms. Hancock?
Yes, I just had a discussion, at least, Annette, we're trying to touch base on the phones. It took about three times for us to get together, but I appreciate her calling back again. So last year was about 426 employees, if I'm correct, that we had, and this year we have 444. So...
What you're referring to is the zero-to-four-year employees?
Yes. And I apologize, I should have said it correctly, and you're right when we visited about it. So do you believe at this time, if we did this with the sick leave and the vacation pay, the zero-to-four would be more retainable and also the 53 at 20-plus? Can you explain that one more time, why that would keep the employees longer at this, you know, at those stages, at the early stages in the retention? Because I truly believe when I was on Compensation Committee that the retention of the 20-plus or the 53 employees at 20-plus were a big, I don't know, I can't say big problem, but an area that we needed to discuss to make sure we retained them. Because that experience and training of their employees was very important to our Comp Committee, let alone Pennington County departments.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, I absolutely believe that. We have, this morning, just greeting all of the new employees. You've seen how many there were. They're coming from other locations, other employers, that they've had some longevity with and accrued vacation hours, and to come here and now be able to see carrots a little bit sooner than other employees or employers in the area, I think that's going to be a huge retention benefit for them to stay, stay a little bit longer with Pennington County. And then to answer your question on the 20-plus-year employees, that's the goal, is to keep them as long as we possibly can, to have them share the knowledge that they have to our up-and-coming employees that are right now in the zero-to-four, four years or even more. But currently, our plan is devised for at year 15, you get the same amount of vacation accrual as you do at year 30. So that was the goal, is to try to implement little, little steps along the way to retain.
So when we visited, you talked about the regularly hourly benefitted people. Tell me why you believe that this is going to make a difference for them, too?
I think what you're referring to is my comment on exempt employees versus hourly employees. So this plan is devised to recruit and retain our hourly employees. Our exempt employees already have a self-built-in benefit that's not seen by an hourly employee. Whereas, an exempt employee, if they needed to go to, maybe say, their child's Christmas program or whatever, they're able to either make up those hours or not use vacation hours to do that where an hourly employee does. So I think this targets our hourly employees that we're trying to retain and...
One more question, if I could, Ms. Annette. So we had 23 that retired last year. How do you think this is going to impact the budget? We talked about this as well. Just depending on how many retire this year and whose budget, hopefully, our department heads have that already kind of planned in their budgets, or can you not plan ahead?
Mr. Chair, I, I don't believe that we can give you a exact dollar amount of what this is going, or how this is going to affect the budget, and here's why. We don't, in some cases, as a department head, we don't know if somebody's planning on retiring. They haven't reached out to say that. There could be whatever triggers that. So where it's going to affect the budget is if a person who decides to retire at one of the increments that have raised, so if you look at the, if you look at the spreadsheet that has the comparables on there, where you're going to see it is from a 10-year employee to a 20-year employee.
Hold on just a second.
Okay, sorry.
Which chart is that?
Okay, it looks like this is on your dais this morning because we had to do a revision. There was a typo on there, so I'm sorry about that. So 10-year employee to a 20-year employee, because you can see where their accrual, their maximum hours, I'm sorry, 15, 15 to 20-year employee, because their maximum hours are increased from 160, I'm sorry, 320.
240.
No, actually, I'm, I'm sorry. So if you look at that one, the 20-plus-year employees are the only ones where the maximum accrual increased. It's increasing from 320 to 340.
Right.
So if somebody retires and they're a 20-plus-year employee, that's where we're going to see it in the budget, because they have the ability to accrue an additional 20 hours if they retire.
Okay.
Our hope is that they're going to use those hours to rest and relax on the, on their days off so that they can help department heads train the newer employees with the knowledge that they have as well. But that's where we're going to see it, because of the, they can actually have an extra 20 hours in that bank if they do retire. So there's 53 employees right now that are 20, 20-plus years.
Yes, ma'am. So we discussed that this morning, and I appreciate that, that where they, where it would be, the issue probably with the budgets is the 20 extra, and that's what we have to, and the department heads have to accrue to make sure we're planned ahead. The other is, if, this is my thought, if we had 23 last year, that's a lot of, it depends on how many hours we're paying them out.
Right.
It'd be nice to know at this point, for the next meeting, if Carol could get that for us, is how many, what did that cost us last year with the 23 retired? Does that make sense?
Mr. Chair, not really, because if the, it depends on what their accrual is.
Right.
And so they're going to be using it.
Right.
And it's not, it's not comparing what, what we're trying to do here with what happened this year, because on the 20-plus-year employees, it's adding, if you look on that difference in rate, it's adding one hour, 1.53 hours to those 53 employees. And then we've, and that's at the point where we're not seeing a difference because of sick leave, because they're also, they're also earning the same amount that we have always provided for sick leave. And there's a, there's a savings for that, too, in the sick leave where, where they were getting 3.69 hours from day one.
Right.
Now, from day one to day 10, 10 years, they're not, I'm sorry, 15, one to five, all of those employees are getting a reduction in their sick leave, too.
So kind of. So, Annette, did you have people retire last year? Was any of those your employees?
Janet Salery resigned last year.
I just wondered if that...
And that's an exempt employee, so it doesn't, no, there's no...
Oh, it doesn't?
Pay out there.
Okay.
So that's why it's, it's hard to say.
That's why it's the differences between exempt and non-exempt and where they retired from.
Right.
All right.
And if I, if, if I can hear, too, there's a few other intangible benefits to this that may or may not affect the budget and makes it hard for us to give you a dollar figure on it. I look at this as a recruitment tool, able to attract more recruits through improved work-life balance. The retention employees value seeing that they would be able to accrue more vacation in a shorter incremental years of service with the county. It costs, again, more to recruit, hire, train, and retain employees. HR provided approximately 30% of an annual salary of the position, so to retrain somebody. Create a culture of encouraging employees to take time to re-energize and recharge. Succession planning, which is huge. Eliminate the stigma for long-term employees that they can't take time off by encouraging them to plan for vacation, by sharing their institutional knowledge, cross-train less tenure employees. Elected officials and department heads are able to better plan department staffing needs when vacation time is planned versus same-day call-in for sick leave, which oftentimes results in paying overtime to cover their business needs. So how we would calculate all of that if that hypothetically happened, they called in and didn't, you know, use it, there's a, there's a huge balance there and a, and a big estimate, so.
Thank you, Annette. I appreciate your time and, and visiting with me beforehand.
Any other questions from the Commission? Thank you, Annette.
You're welcome. Thank you.
So that takes us back to item 15. Items from Buildings and Grounds, and I'll recognize Construction Project Manager Kevin Burton.
Morning, Commissioners. What I have before you today is the lease-back agreement with the purchase of 14 St. Joe, the First Interstate Bank building. It's the last piece. It was a condition of the purchase agreement. All the other purchase agreement items have been approved, so this is just the lease-back agreement. It gets signed at closing or dated at closing so that it takes effect when we become owners. And that's just leasing back a portion of the, the building for the drive-up window to continue to operate for three to five years so that they can make the transition out of that building fully.
Thanks, Kevin. Is there any questions for Kevin?
Mr. Chair. Kevin, if I read that right, it's a gross lease. So could you just summarize to the Commission what expenses the tenant would be responsible for?
The tenant is responsible for all their own cleaning and those kind of things. We pay the utilities and the garbage services, landlord. They have to provide their own security electronics and everything for their area. So...
You know, another thing, if that becomes property of Pennington County, then we don't pay taxes on that, so, but I thought in the lease agreement, it said the tenant was responsible for taxes, so that's just kind of a boilerplate lease agreement that really didn't address who pays the taxes.
I think they are responsible for the square footage of the building that they lease. And they, they're responsible for paying the taxes on that portion of the building.
Okay. That's all I had, Mr. Chair.
Is there any public comment? Any further discussion? Mr. Lassiter.
Kevin, I have a question, and it's a slightly off, I mean, it's, it's in line with this, but after reviewing all of the Building Committee minutes and stuff, my question comes down to this. Can we in good faith still recommend the purchase of this building when we're having problems funding some of the stuff that the Building Committee deals with? I mean, we're talking about the stuff over at JSC with the, let me find it here, dealing with the courthouse tunnel repair, the, the drainage over at JSC, and the CTH tunnels. If we're pushing those off because we don't have the funds for those, but we're still going to push forward to buying this building, how can we justify that? Why wouldn't we want to take care of the stuff that we need to, that we know is important, that actually has, like, we need to do that now?
I guess the, the determining factor is, is it need to do now, or is it something that isn't an immediate threat that can wait? The tunnel obviously has some degradation and some demise, and it is needing replaced sooner than later, but it's been there for 100 years, and can we get one more year out of it with the hopes of saving the county $750,000 by reapplying for the grant? That was the Building Committee's recommendation on that project, was to postpone it for a year to see if we can get the grant money again to help offset county costs on that building. We thought that we could make the tunnel last a year to see if we can get the results of that tunnel, the results of that grant to help offset the cost of the tunnel replacement. That was their recommendation. So I, I in good faith can say, yes, I stand behind that decision. We have, as far as purchasing the bank, the building for the square footage, I think it's good planning for us to be able to prepare for the square footage for the growth of the county. We've had a lot of growth recently. It's projected that it's going to continue to grow. We have needs for space now. I met with several departments yesterday just trying to figure out how to get our new Marketing Manager to fit someplace in this building. We have no more square footage available in this building, so it's, it's really a hard decision to make when we at Buildings and Grounds have trouble hiring new people because we have no space for them to sit at. We have problems in this building where we don't have an office for a new Marketing Manager. We have taken up all of the conference rooms and stuff in the State's Attorney's Office for their employees.
But that's offset with nine...
We have, I mean, there's just all kinds of...
But everything you just spoke about right there is offset into us buying 900 concourse, which I'm 100% for. I'm talking about the immediate needs now. I mean, when we have drainage that goes from one of our county properties onto the neighboring property, if we saw that in somebody's home, we're going to write them up and we're going to say, hey, there's a problem with that, you need to fix it. Why wouldn't we want to allocate, figure out how to allocate funds to take care of that now?
The, the drainage project over at JSC, when we're draining onto the neighbor's property, that is, that's perfectly legal to do. We're only doing that as good stewards and good neighbors. My personal house, all of my storm drain drained right onto my neighbor's lot. So if they ask me to return or do a dry well, I could consider that, but I'm not legally obligated to do that. So we don't legally have to control our storm water off of JSC. We're just doing that as... We're just doing that as good stewards, good neighbors. The sewer, the sewer line connection as part of that project, they can continue to use the existing septic system, but it does tend to clog and it does tend to have problems. So, our solution is to hook that city sewer.
Why wouldn't we want to do that sooner than later?
Further down in the agenda, we're requesting dollars for that so we can complete that drainage project. The parking lot project is another project that we're postponing, but we want to relook at it as to how to break it down into sections to make it more affordable. What is the most critical area to replace? What is the area that we can do budgetarily? And these are all done with B&amp;G funds. This is, this is the money that's allocated to B&amp;G. But as we get more and more roofs and more and more other items that degrade, then we need to look at helping supplement some of that budget with some additional funds. Or we need to look at alternate ways to address the critical need.
Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Follow-up. How much do you currently get for Building and Grounds funds in general? And then how much do you project that you're going to need? With all the extra roofs and the things that we're looking at?
Yeah, as, as, it's not really my role. But as I understand it, Buildings and Grounds get $800,000 a year for capital maintenance repair. And we've got that allocated several years out. We plan ahead and budget those items. Sometimes we end up with hiccups where suppliers or material can't show up that year, and we have to postpone it for another year, and we end up shuffling that budget around to make things work. And it's all based on a, on an estimate off of an initial scope and setup. And then sometimes things crop up that, just like the JSC parking lot, when we're out there digging that, is it the right time to replace the light poles? They started to rust and degrade at the base. There's, one pole was removed, and there's a junction box that tends to get hit by a plow here and there. So, now's the time, if we're tearing up all the parking lot, do we add conduit? Well, we budget a certain amount for what the immediate need was. But then, as you start investigating the project and getting into the details of it and looking at what would be cost-effective to handle now versus later, those budgets can increase or decrease depending on how that scope looks.
That's all for now.
Mr. Drews.
I would move to approve, as part of the previously approved purchase of 14 St. Joseph Street, the lease agreement between Pennington County and First Interstate Bank effective as of December 22nd, 2023, and authorize the board's, Board Chair's signature thereto.
Second motion?
Chairman.
A motion and a second?
Have discussion.
Ms., yeah.
Thank you.
Ms. Hagcock.
So, I visited with Rita, Kevin, and then Mr. Davis, the Buildings and Grounds Director, this morning. So, they are short $23,275 for the 2024 budget, which if you, like you said, if you move contracts or you have to do different things, I understand that. That's what we've done since beginning. I've been here for, what, nine years? So, it makes sense to do the concrete instead of the asphalt. Mr. Davis explained that. We have, for me, we have $328 million worth of buildings that we are insuring, right? So, I keep seeing the jail being put off on different areas in order for us to make that budget. For me, I'd take the bank money. That's my personal opinion. I'd take the bank money and make sure the jail was sufficient and efficient before I'd buy another building. Because it looks like we're cutting costs or we're moving things around. We had this discussion the other day. You've done amazing what you've had to do. We were $9 million short on the, on this building here because the city didn't have it in their budget at this time. To me, it looks like we have two public safety buildings. We have the city building with police officers. We're going to have a sheriff's office with their buildings. I just think at this time that money is, is needed to finish, instead of buying the bank across the street, is to use for the new administration building and then finish this one. And then maybe eventually the, the police officers or the city would move over here, which I understand. But just watching you and how you have to keep maneuvering things and maneuvering things in order for things to work, that's a lot of work. I also asked you at BKV this morning, is there any change orders? Are they having to redo some of their stuff and cost us more money because we didn't get the $9 million? And we have to kind of reconfigure stuff again? And at this time, if I'm correct, Kevin, there is no extra cost so far. You've been doing that yourself.
There was no extra cost to BKV for any of the planning other than what we had requested of them to add to their scope.
Okay, so when they had to switch and leave the, the, police is going to stay in the public safety building, how much did that change over here? And would that make a difference over? I mean, that's why I said before, maybe you could put the, what's it called, Public Defender's Office in here now since we had switched a bunch of stuff? And then we had that discussion. Can you kind of explain why we wouldn't move? And, and why we need, there's a need for the public defenders to move across the street? Instead of leaving them in the building, we have a five extra employees?
They, they are out of space where they are now. They're leasing space. Their whole team isn't together. They have no practice room for a practicing courts. The conference rooms are limited, so they don't have the space to operate as they should be in a, in a, to have all the space that was planned and programmed for their type of operation. If we leave them here in this building, they can't remain where they are. So, where do I move them? They could move to where the State's Attorney's Office is, but we're not moving the State's Attorney over to the public safety building. We have a master plan. BKV provided us with a master plan.
Right.
And it, it goes through all of the different moves and how everybody can fit into all the different buildings. The bank is one of those, those in the master plan that creates that process. Due to funding, we're not, we can't initiate all of those moves all at once. And we can do that incrementally as long as we continue to follow the master plan. The master plan is set up as that, as a master plan. And we can inter-, do pieces and parts of it along the way. And that's what we're looking at right now, is how can we do pieces and parts? We can move part of the public safety building components over here to free up the space over there that the enforcement departments need. And that allows the records and civil departments over here, allows the State's Attorney to remain here. It saves us cost in remodeling both of these buildings until such time that we can do that. It's still part of the master plan that eventually this will become the public safety building, and the State's Attorney will move over to the public, to the existing public safety building. That's still the master plan. That's still the grand scheme of things. We just can't implement that until down the road. Right now, we found an interim solution, and that's the path we're moving forward with.
So, I appreciate that. But it seems like whenever we did things before, if it didn't work, the master plan would have to change. And because you're of $9 million short in the city not moving forward, it seems like the master plan at this time maybe should have changed. And I know the need you're saying is across the street, but the need is also for funding because we do have utilities, employees, insurances, everything that comes with all these buildings at this time. And it seems like, for me, again, my, my priority is trying to finish the jail and the infrastructure that we need first in Pennington County. And then anything we have should be put into the new administration building and then finishing some of the stuff here. But we have, when you showed me the pictures with Mr. Davis, and Travis was there, you had two big areas that weren't being filled yet. But that was for the master plan later on. But like I said, maybe the master plan has to change because of, basically, a whole different department, meaning the city police station is not going to be moving with us. If it's future needs, that's kind of what we're talking about to me.
And the caution I would put in that is, when this building was being designed, this building had excess space built into it for our future growth. That building, that square footage was pulled out. Now, we're at a predicament today where this building, it, it was designed to last 20 years.
Right.
Nine, 10 years down the road, we've exceeded the limit of this building. Now, we had to go buy another building.
Right.
So, to not plan the growth square footage into our master plan does not seem like a good economical solution to me. To me, it seems like it's a lot better to plan now, and then we don't have to move these departments every 10 years or try to find square footage 10 years down the road that we're going to end up needing.
So, I appreciate that, Kevin, and everything you have done. But for me, the master plan is technology and some of the areas that maybe we did during COVID for some different areas so we didn't need as much space for people in our building. So, I think, I think that's going to be the future with everything that's happening and the, the next generation coming up. A lot of them like to work at home. And some of these areas, maybe that's what we need to do in order to accommodate and make Pennington County retain its employees and also not buying as many buildings. So, I appreciate everything you've done again, Kevin.
Thank you. We do have a motion on the floor, and this has to do with the lease agreement. Is there any further discussion? Any further public comment? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries with three ayes and two noes.
Thank you.
Next, that brings us up to items from emergency management, item number 16, and I'll recognize Director Dustin Willet.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. Dustin Willet, Pennington County Emergency Manager. I'm going to throw the L-word back in front of you. What this is, is a communication tower site on top of Bear Mountain. There's about five or six towers up there currently, owned by different entities throughout the area. This communication site, Black Hills Energy leases two different sites from the Forest Service currently. And they actually didn't realize that they still had a lease on, on this, this particular site. They built a brand-new site up there, so they've been leasing two sites from the Forest Service. The reason that, that Pennington County, by way of emergency management, gets brought into this is one of the, the primary communication pieces that emergency management relies on and the Emergency Operations Center relies on is the Amateur Radio Relay League, Emergency Services, and our Pennington County Radio Auxiliary. So, when things, when we have large, complex emergencies or disasters in the county, our public safety communication is, is tapped. There's a lot of traffic on that state digitally-trunk system. The reason that, that emergency management has partnered with amateur radios, amateur radio groups, is to move our radio traffic off of those primary public safety systems, the statewide systems. So, if you, if you ever see our communication room in the EOC, there is certainly statewide digital radios in there. But we also have an extensive amateur radio, ham radio setup that we use for, for our communications. One of the primary systems that we use is called the Black Hills Link Repeater System. So, Terry Peak out, up on top of Radon Hill and Bear Mountain that we're talking about today are link repeaters that we use to maintain coverage across Pennington County with those amateur radio frequencies. Black Hills Energy no longer wants to maintain the lease on their, the old tower. They, again, they didn't even realize they were still leasing that. They lease it from the Forest Service. It's, it's national forest property. So, I've entered in with, with our Amateur Radio Relay League and the Emergency Communication Services that they offer. And with the Forest Service and with Black Hills Energy, we have been exploring whether or not emergency management can step in and assume that lease. And so, what's before you today is, is a request for me to, to pursue that. I don't have the lease yet. There's actually an application to the Forest Service for, for them to draw up a lease. Obviously, once that was actually drawn up, we'd have State's Attorney take a look at it and make sure everything was, was kosher before it would come before this commission for an actual signature. So, today, I'm just asking for, for permission to pursue this. The lease amount for that site annually for, for my office for emergency management is $140 a year. So, for $140 a year, we can maintain this communication site up on, on Bear Mountain. I did have Black Hills Energy do a tower inspection. Out of that tower inspection, I had our local Vicor telecommunication companies take a look at that inspection. And there's a little bit of anchor repair that needs to happen sooner rather than later. And again, that only totals, I think, just, just right under $1,500. So, for a, a quick $1,500 repair and then $140 a year, I can, my office can, can help maintain that, Black Hills repeater link that we use, again, for, for communications out of our Emergency Operations Center. So, that's what's before you today.
Thanks. Mr. Drews.
So, Dustin, did Black Hills Energy, did they have to remove equipment then from there or not?
So, they, their actual radio equipment, they moved from this site that we're talking about a few hundred yards away to, to the new site that they built.
Okay.
So, they moved radio communic-, the, the equipment. But the tower and the, the building, the shack that, that houses the radio equipment is still there.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any further questions for Dustin?
Thanks, Dustin.
Now, I'd look for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by Hagcock, seconded by Laster, to authorize the Director of Emergency Management to enter into a lease agreement with the U.S. Forest Service to operate an existing telecommunication tower at the Bear Mountain communication site.
And let me just clarify that, that-
Please.
It's the application to, to pursue this. The actual lease agreement, when it gets drafted, will come back before you for a signature.
Okay. Motion maker and second are okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Any further questions? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Next, we come to item number 17, items from Emergency Services, 911 Dispatch. I'll recognize Chair.
Good morning, Commissioners. Ted Rufflett, Deputy Director, Pennington County 911. The action before you today is to ask for the commission's approval of the Chair's signature on an amendment. This would be Amendment Number Two to the Joint Powers Agreement we have in place with South Dakota Department of Military, South Dakota National Guard. As you probably recall, we rent a building from them on Camp Rapid that serves as the backup 911 center. And currently, there's 10 operator positions in that center. We have 16 in our main center. And so, we didn't think it would be an issue initially, but it has been an issue the last couple of years. And especially if we, God forbid, if we actually needed, something happened to the main center, we needed to move out there. We don't have the same number of positions out there and the same number of capabilities. So, the Guard is willing to remodel that building so that we can add some positions in the future. And that's what this amendment is for. How they like to do things is they like to go out to bid, select the contractor, remodel the building, and then bill us for the cost of it. Sometimes they split the cost with it. In this case, we would pay the cost, and we would come back to you. This work wouldn't happen until next year. So, they would like to get the JPA, the amendment, executed now with a not-to-exceed cost. And then we would come back next year for the spending authority if we needed to supplement our budget, if we can't cover it from our budget. And it would come from the 911 Reserve Fund. So, it wouldn't be any county general funds. It would be money that we have set aside for this kind of a project.
Thanks, Ted. Is there any questions from the commission?
Chair.
Ms. Hagcock.
Thank you, Ted. I was going to ask you that question on the budget. So, I appreciate that.
No problem. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Mr. Drews.
I move to approve Amendment Number Two to the Joint Powers Agreement between South Dakota Department of Military and Pennington County.
Second.
Moved by Drews, seconded by Laster. Any public comment? See none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thanks, Ted.
Very much.
Nice tie, Shannon.
Now this takes us up to item number 18, items from equalization, I'll recognize Shannon.
Good mornings. You have two requests for abatement. They're pretty simple. One of them was typo, uh click the wrong box for an elderly assessment freeze, and we need to fix that. And the other one is a trailer house that burned that we discovered after the fact.
Is there any?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lassiter.
I was going to make a motion to approve the abatement applications for tax year 2022 for the following parcels. Jennifer Shacklet, number 57630, $999.20, and Linda Barrett, number 8006474, for 8266.
Second.
I have a motion from Lassiter and a second from Roskineak. Is there any public comment? Any further discussion? See none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you.
Next, we come, brings us up to item number 19. These are items from the Highway Department, and I'll recognize Superintendent Joe Miller.
Good morning, Commission, Joe Miller, Pennington County Highway Department. With us today, I've got Sean Mayfield from K L J here. If I can get, uh, let's see here. Where is?
It's John or Sean?
Sean Mayfield. Trying to find the full screen here. All right, with that, I'll let Sean take it away.
Good morning, Commissioner, Sean Mayfield, K L J Engineering. I'm just here to give you a brief summary overview of our bridge inspections for 2023. There were 69 bridges inspected in 2023. With that, 58 of those found no changes. They, nothing had changed at all. Five of, of them had improvements done. There's one with full reconstruction at Sherman Street. And four of them had in-depth rehabilitation or preservation. Uh, six bridges did have noted deficiencies that we marked into our reports, mostly to do with concrete con, condition and the, the load carrying capacity of the bridges. But no critical findings. Critical findings are essentially stop everything and close a bridge if you have to, but none of that. First, we'll talk about the full replacement. Uh, Bridge 246 to 98 is at Sherman Street in Silver City. That was an existing timber and concrete bridge that was replaced with a new 50-foot continuous concrete bridge, solid concrete all through. We just had our final inspection meeting yesterday, so there's just a few punchless items to clean up. We'll do our initial, final inspection of it so that the state knows it's open for traffic. Uh, bridges with in-depth preservation, and what this entails is replacing deficient beams. As you can see in this bridge, this is just south of New Underwood. The beams were replaced. Concrete that had spalling or deterioration had been repaired, and the railings were repainted. And locations, Neck Yoke Road, uh, one on Lower Spring Creek Road and two on 161st, just south of New Underwood.
Chair, can I ask a question? Sir, how many, uh, do we have? Most of our bridges concrete now, or do we still have a lot of the wood bridges left?
Most are concrete. I would say that there's, there's under 20 that are timber. You have 127 on your.
Yes, sir.
On your, your highway system.
Like 20 would be wood.
Yeah, I don't even think there's that many, Joe. It's, it's pretty, you're down very low on those, and some of those are actually scheduled to be replaced as well.
And do we replace all of the wood when we do that, Joe, into the concrete bridges eventually? Or some of them are just doing well as they are being wood bridges?
I mean, honestly, it depends on the condition of the abutments, whether, you know, like the, the Sherman Street, if you go back to that one, the, the Sherman Street Bridge had wood abutments with upgraded double Ts on it, right? So sometimes you can do that, but a lot of times in this day, you know, this day and age, we just do exactly what you see there and replace the entire structure um with a continuous concrete uh bridge. The, the, you don't see a whole lot of the double Ts. We are talking with Sean on some, uh, some stuff that we've learned from different bridge uh conferences on things that we can maybe bring to the county level um and, and do some innovation and try and do some things cheaper, so.
So do we have any on the radar of the wood bridges on our five-year plan?
Yes, so the, the two that come to mind are um out in Travis's district. There's one on Trask Road, um, and the other one is on 159th Street, just west of New Underwood. Both of those are both load rated, um, and their timber structures built, I think Trask was built in the 30s, um, and 159th was built in the 50s or 60s, so.
So are the loads on a wood bridge a lot less or not necessarily?
Several of them are restricted because of that, yes.
Okay.
So if it was a brand-new bridge, you could build it to, uh, to haul the loads. But um, you know, they, they rehabilitated the, the uh Keystone Y bridges with wood. You know, they've redid it with wood to um keep the, the aesthetics.
Yes.
Right, so it can be done, but as we all know, wood just doesn't last as long as concrete does, um, depending on the conditions, so.
Appreciate that. Sorry to interrupt your presentation, but it just came to mind about the wood bridges.
I will go on to.
Thank you.
Some noted deficiencies that we found. Of the six bridges, there were three that had items, significant items that we wanted to make note of. This is on Shields Road, um, just off of Highway 44. As you can see, concrete is starting to deteriorate there at the, the water line. That's just from uh age and water flow. And it is just to, to monitor this, to make sure that there's no embankment tur, material or the roadway embankment behind there that might filter out and cause an unsafe condition. Um, and this is actually on the five-year plan to program for repairs as well. Uh, next one is on South Valley Drive, Bridge 44316. And this is just starting to see some concrete cracking and deterioration with exposed reinforcing bars. Uh, once again, just monitoring it for changes over each inspection cycle. And this will, I've talked with the Highway Department of programming this one for repairs as well. Not, not replacement or anything like that. It's just to repair the concrete that needs to be repaired. One of the timber bridges that you had mentioned, this is on 234th Street. Timber is deteriorating. You can see this is a 12-inch by 12-inch timber cap that supports the, the deck above. It's just deteriorating over time. So this bridge is posted for load now because of the deterioration that you see there.
How long has that bridge been there?
The abutment of timber is from 1940s.
That's a long time for a wood bridge to last.
I'll go through, bridges are rated in condition of good, fair, and poor. So I'll just give you some examples of the good, fair, and poor bridges on your system. Um, 16 of them, as inspected, are in good condition. Uh, this is an example on Palmer Creek Road just south of Palmer Gulch. It's built in 2009. It is in good condition. Uh, 42 bridges fall in the fair condition, which nationwide, um, that's about where most bridges fall as well, is in the fair condition. The bridges on Sheridan Lake Road are continuous concrete, built in 1974, and they're showing signs of concrete delamination. And uh talking with the Highway Department, those are musicals for repairs in the future to, to reinforce the concrete. And then finally, uh, poor condition, there were 11 bridges. For an example here, this is a timber bridge on Hugh the Road, built in 1940, and it, it does, it has deteriorated piling and decking. Um, it's, it's completely, um, consists of timber, both um and the substructures, the superstructure, the deck, and the railing. And it is posted for load. Uh, we do have this on a 12-month inspection cycle. Um, standard is 24 months, but just for the condition, it is a yearly inspection for this bridge, and it is scheduled to replace it, I think, next year.
It's scheduled for February.
February. That is extensive, my presentation. Is there any questions for me?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskineak.
So the bridge on Sheridan Lake Road that went uh across Spring Creek, I think there's seven down there, maybe eight?
Eight, yes.
Uh, and that one was uh rated fair. What would the other ones be? Because they, they were all built, I think, in 74.
They are all in, they are all rated as the fair condition due to the, the concrete surface. There are some areas where the concrete is starting to flake and.
So the, we needed to do a repair or replacement. We'd just probably look at the worst one and, and, and go in that particular sequence, then?
They're all very similar, and I think it could actually be done as a project where you do the repairs as a bundled project, because they would be very similar between each of them to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any further discussions from our questions? Thanks, Sean, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
All right, I didn't know if she wanted to put the, the screen up or not. So uh, item B is a resolution for our big grants. So this is actually our fourth year applying for big grants after we obtained the wheel tax in 2020. As of the last report uh that Holly just sent out li, yesterday, we've received $3.4 million uh in revenue from the wheel tax for this year, so we still have the month of December to go. Um, so we're trending above what we projected. We projected that we would get $3.5 million with that increase uh to, from $2 to, to $5. So hopefully this year, we will come in a little bit over that 3.5, and we'll give us a, a good gauge of what we'll have funding-wise going forward. So last year this time, we had a, it's up about $2 million. So last year this time, we had about $1.4 million in revenue from the wheel tax. So I'll talk about the big grants and the, the funds. Excuse me. As of uh this time, we've received about $2 million uh of funding, excuse me. We've, total awarded is about $2.9 million um funding-wise. 2023, we have, so on this resolution, there's eight bridges. So after we put the resolution together and submitted it for the board packet, we got some clarification from the state. Uh, these, the bridges must be rated in poor condition in order to apply to the, the state. So there's five of those bridges that we're actually unable to apply for those because they're still in fair condition. So we're going to have to go back to the drawing board a little bit and figure out how to fund those with county dollars. So we're, we're applying for three in 2024. The three are uh, the two, there's two on Thunderhead Falls, so the numbers 318, 318, uh, 320, 312, and then uh one on Lower Spring Creek, um, 457, 406. Those total, the dollars for those from the big funds that we're expecting is 1.2 million. Uh, county dollars would be about two and a half, or $250,000. So with that being said, there's a lot of stuff coming up that we're, we've kind of got the low-hanging fruit as far as the big grant goes. And it's going to be a lot more competitive for us going forward, so we're going to have to start um figuring out how to fund these with county dollars. Travis, uh, I know we were going to apply for the Highway 1416 bridges next year, but they're still in fair condition, so we're not able to actually apply for those. We're going to talk to, to K L J and um still try and get those bid out for construction in 2025. Which bridges? The ones right east of Box Elder. Okay. So uh, there's one that's load-rated, I think, Sean, it's a 12 tons, 13 tons. It's, it's fairly, it might be at 18 tons, so. And that goes up to that rubble site. We are working with Sean, and we've got a meeting set up tomorrow. There's a federal bridge grant out there. The minimum is $2.5 million, so it needs to be a bundled project. So there's three bun, three projects there that we're going to try to apply for a federal grant to get those replaced, so. We're not totally out of the running on that, but I think it will be several years before those bridges go to a poor condition just with, I mean, they were built in 1926, so they're definitely built to last. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskineak.
Bill, can you just summarize the difference when we submit those grant applications to South Dakota DOT that summarize the difference between preservation, rehabilitation, and replacement? And I think last year, we discovered that makes a difference on which one of those we choose uh relative to being selected uh for the big, our big grant.
So fortunate enough, we have Sean here. I'll let Sean maybe explain the difference, if you want to come up, Sean. So Sean is, is done, it, they, it, since the first year we applied, they've moved the hoop. So um, you know, preservations were anything that you were doing, superstructure. I don't know exactly what they're entailing as preservation this year.
So preservation is, goes by deck surface. If you're doing, replacing beams any more than 20% of the deck surface, then it's considered a rehabilitation. So they're kind of drawing the line on how much you're actually doing to the bridge as part of preservation work versus rehabilitation would be taking it that next step just before a full replacement, where you'd be removing all of the deck beams and replacing them or doing some major report, repairs to it. Thank you.
Chairman.
Ms. Hancock.
Motion is request to approve Resolution 2023-12-05-1, authorizing Pennington County to submit Bridge Improvement Grant Plan Program. Applications for Bridges 52310-306, 52-314-432, 52318-318, 52-319-268, 52-320-312, 52-457-406, 52-511-280, and 52-512-280.
Second.
Moved by Hickok and seconded by Lassiter?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
Question, Joe. So, Joe, when you said we've been awarded the 2.9 million in the big grants, so has that encompassed three years of applications?
That is correct, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so we were awarded, I think, two our first year, and we, uh, we were awarded six last year. I'm missing a year in there. We've done a lot of work to all of these, so it's all running together. I apologize, so. But yeah, the, the total is $2.9 million that we've been awarded. And then on top of that, we've also been awarded the federal funds from the state with, I think it equates for another three and a half, almost $4 million in funding on the federal stuff. You know, the, the funding that we're going to have to fund without the big, big funds, I think, is another bigger point to make. You know, the, the five that we're not able to apply for, total cost would be about $3.3 million um in the coming years, so. We're going to have to figure out how to fund those.
Thank you, Joe.
Do you have a motion and a second on the floor? Is there any public comment? Any further from the commission? If not, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Next, that brings us up to item number 20, and these are items from Building Committee, and I'll recognize Construction Project Manager Kevin Burton.
Morning again.
Long time no see.
First item that we have here is um recommendation from the Building Committee. This is our second meeting, um, brought to you this last meeting. This is for the sewer connections and storm drainage over at Highway and Juvenile Services Department. So there's a couple of, of areas that are still hooked to a septic system, and we'd like to get those onto the city sewer so that we don't have the drainage problems that are backups and clogs that we experience here and there um on those properties and um eliminate the septic completely. And then we've got some stormwater that's running onto the neighbor property, and we'd like to control that and get it off um out into the street and not onto the neighbor's property as good neighbors. So um, that's what's before you today. We had put this in a, uh, B and G's capital maintenance budget as a line item, and the project grew a little bit in scope and um increased the price. So I went to the Building Committee and said, we will fund as much as we can from any surplus we have in the, the B and G funds, but we're asking for accumulated building funds to cover the difference in a not-to-exceed amount of $120,000.
Thank you, Kevin. Is there any questions for Kevin?
Chair.
Ms. Hancock.
So for me, I'll keep saying we're planning ahead, and I appreciate that on the jail. I still think we need to do the existing infrastructure, a lot of the pipe and stuff that needs to be replaced, the courthouse, um tunnels and stuff that uh, I don't know if, I have to look at my papers. to look at my papers, it was in your Building Committee, some of the courthouse areas that needed to be redone. We also were supplementing this year for insurance, another 500,000 that were short. There's some areas that we're finding at this time that we're finally short on our budget areas. We only have 2 million right now in accumulative building for all the buildings we're gonna build at this time, for basically 1 million in reserves. Your 800,000 is already taken. So for me, again, I'm worried about the budget. The budget areas that you are trying to save, Kevin, and I appreciate that, but I just think for future needs, this jail needs to be done right. We know that from this building and administration building here. When we didn't plan for future needs on this building, what happened? I believe the same thing needs to be happening with the jail as what we're saying on other buildings in these areas, that the jail, for me, has always been on the radar since I've been here nine million, or nine million years. I've aged well. For the 28 million, I never thought it would stay in 28 million, I'm just gonna tell you, from being in here nine years and understanding all the needs of the jail and the future needs of the jail. So again, I'm going to vote on this, but my area of concern again is all the areas that we have to and we're falling short on just to finish this jail, I'd like to see it done before we buy any more buildings. So again, I've always been in support of the jail and doing it right and making sure all those needs are met because we keep continually doing things to the jail, and we already know for future needs, it's not gonna get any smaller unless we do some, I don't know, I don't think in technology wise or things we can do that, we just have to have less people that go to jail, but we found that that's not happening. So I truly believe this is a need and not a want.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Again, we're on Highway Juvenile Department Drainage Request, but Mr. Last, I'm sorry, Roskin.
I'll go ahead and move to authorize advertisement for bid for the Highway and Juvenile Department Drainage Project with understanding that a not to exceed amount of 120,000 could be utilized from the accumulated building fund in addition to the building and grounds project funds to complete the project.
Motion from Roskin and a seconded from Drews. Any further discussion? Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item B is Jail Infrastructure and Tower Project Design Service Agreement.
So, last meeting, we also brought before you a design services agreement with BKV Group to work on our jail design. I agree with that our jail is in need of a lot of, lot of work. It's, it's got a lot of things going on with it. Last time we, last time BKV was here, they presented several options that we had shown to the Building Committee, options one, two, and three, and through that, through the Building Committee, we agreed on a reduced option number two. So that's what's up on the screen here before us. And so I'll just do a quick walkthrough of this. This is our existing main jail tower that needs a lot of infrastructure needs. This is our jail annex. These are both connected below grade here. We are, this proposal is to add a third tower of housing units, so this adds 148, or somewhere around there, new beds for the jail. So this will help with their overcrowding and gives us space to be able to move inmates back and forth so we can address some of the other problems in this wing here. In this project, as a reduced project, the things we reduced was this green area here shaded and portion of the old kitchen area of this building is where the new medical unit will go. This is the existing medical unit, it's undersized for the growth projection for the jail. So this would be the new medical unit, and it's centralized between all three towers, allowing all people to come from any tower into the medical wing for variety of uses. This is a future plan for a new Sallyport and elevators. This would centralize inmate transfers between these two towers, and all of movement in the jail would happen basically between these two new elevators. The booking area is over here in the existing jail with the existing Sallyport. The existing Sallyport after this, in the future expansion, the existing Sallyport and the booking area would all get remodeled to, be sized appropriately for the amount of growth that this could happen. This tower would be set up so that it could have three more towers or three more floors built on top of it, all with mezzanine levels. So 148 beds times three, that'll meet all of our growth projections for the next 20, 25 years to be able to house all of our current projected growth of inmates. It falls right in line with our option one, and our future growth as part of this design we're asking for today would build this out, shell in this area for the future expansion of the medical, create this connector hallway through the main jail so that all three towers are still connected subterraneously, and would also improve the first floor up here where this purple area becomes your public space, and this would be visitation booths. So this is where they can meet with attorneys with public, do video court, all of that. We could have secure inmate transfers to this area so that they could see that. We're expanding central control. It's very small right now, and they don't have enough room in there for the projected growth. So the main part of this is developing central control and adding the new housing tower and creating the new public space. So in the future, what this allows us to do is remove the double elevators that are here that are secure elevators now and expand that into program space and be able to remove all the visitation booths that are on the other floors, also allowing more growth for that area there. We can have the electronics upgraded and a lot of those other items upgraded on the second, third floors as our budget allows. Controlling the budget as much as we can with this smaller footprint, we meet the immediate needs of housing, and we're addressing the sewage infrastructure of all the floors up above here, coming down to this first floor, we're capturing all of that waste on the first floor and in the basement and taking it out to a new drain line that's gonna be developed with this new tower. As we can look at budget and other items like that and other savings in the other projects we've got going on, we would implement any of those bond proceeds that capital projects money into furthering the infrastructure project that is in this jail. So we'd be upgrading any of the security electronics that we need to do. This new tower's gonna have to have security electronics, so given the need for that and the new control center, now's the time to really look at how we increase that security electronic. The original budget, estimated budget for this, the option two and reduced option two, this is just bullet points that show what, what the differences are between the two, how we reduce the scope to make it into the budget but still meet the immediate needs. And this is their projection, so we're fitting in that 28 to 32 million dollars. The actual construction costs and soft costs are a little less, so we would apply any of our budget money into those security electronics. That's the end of my speech. So BKV is here in the audience. If you have questions about how we're, we're doing reduced option number two, then I'll stand for any other questions.
Mr. Roskin.
So Kevin, as the jail complex grows, it's safe to assume that parking's gonna be a bigger issue down this area of the campus. And so with the acquisition of the Great Western Bank Building comes a 28,000 square foot lot located adjacent to the existing Lamp lighter lot. So I'm assuming until those will eventually get developed sometime, they could be used for parking needs.
Yeah, the, the lots that we acquired with the First Interstate Bank sale already house somewhere in the neighborhood of 90 parking spots, so that's available to us. And then as we finish the development of 900 concourse, this building will empty out over there for the most part, at least a good portion of it. So a lot of those employee parking spaces will be freed up within our parking garage. That will allow some of the projected parking needs we need down here on the campus. We do have to relocate the secure sheriff parking spot that they have now. It is on the east side of the jail, and we are most likely going to reserve spots on the second floor of the parking garage for jail vehicles or for enforcement sheriff's office vehicles so that they can be there and still have ready access to the public safety building.
Okay, thank you.
Chair.
Hagcock.
So the Sallyport and the new elevators, they're not needed right now.
No, the existing Sallyport and booking will operate as long as they have that transitional housing that they can use to put, put people in right off the get go, so.
So you reduced the scope of the, and you did the immediate needs right now, why did we reduce the scope of the project? Just because of funding, because at this time Sheriff Mueller's saying, okay, these are immediate needs, we can hold off in the next three to five years on the other projects?
So option one was in the 60, 70 million dollar range.
Right.
We just don't have the bond proceeds for that. We don't have the, the money to do an option one. We looked at option two, it's still in the 50 million dollar range. We don't have the, the budget for that. So now we're, we reduced it down to this 28 to 32 million.
So my, my concern is that, that's what we did with this building, that's what I was talking about earlier. We reduced it down to the immediate needs, and then we fell short of what we needed for future needs. And I, and I keep saying, to me, the jail is number one, so I won't, I'm good.
I think the one difference that I can relate between this building and the jail is this building didn't plan for future growth and expansion, and we have all of that future growth and expansion built into the design of what we're doing with the jail here. So we can, as the need grows and as the funds become available, we can expand in the footprint in place versus having to find some other location for jail.
And I appreciate that, Kevin, but reducing the scope of the immediate needs and then having a $2 million accumulative building with a 1 million in reserves for what ifs, we have again, $328 million worth of buildings, and that's a lot for you guys to have to attempt to shuffle things in order to make things work. So I appreciate everything you've done, Kevin.
So any further questions for Kevin? If not, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskin.
authorized the chair's signature to the AIA Document B 133-2019, Standard Form of Agreement Between Owner and Architect. Construction manager as contractor addition dated November the 28th, 2023 between Pennington County and the BKV Group Inc. for professional services related to the design and construction of the project identified as Pennington County Jail Infrastructure and Tower Project for the total fixed fee of $1,782,002 plus reimbursable expenses that shall not exceed 100,000.
Second.
Moved by Roskin, seconded by Hagcock. Any further discussion? Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Okay. Next, this brings us up to public comment period time, and I'll read off what it's for. Speaker request form is required. I do believe I have six speaker request forms. This is a time for the members of the public to discuss and express concerns to the Board of Commissioners on policies and issues affecting the county government and its function. Action will not be taken during this item on any issues brought forth and are not properly noted. Speakers under this item will be recorded in the minutes by name and of interest. With that, the first one I do have is Patrick Bowman.
Yeah, Bowman.
Bowman.
Hello, Pennington County Commissioners. My name is Patrick Bowman, and I'm from Custer County, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak here today. Although I'm not a resident of Pennington County, like many thousands of neighboring county residents, we spend a lot of time in Pennington County. And as you know, it's a good shopping hub, and it's a hub of events and activity that we don't have in our smaller counties. So we appreciate having you here and the ability to be here. First, I'm a supporter of the Second Amendment, and I'm an enhanced concealed carry owner and enjoy the privilege of the right to keep and bear arms. I applaud you, county commissioners, for the, making Pennington County a Second Amendment sanctuary county. That is huge, and I wish every county in the United States would do the same thing. And many have joined the, the cause and followed your lead in that. I was surprised, like many people that I've talked to in Custer County and Pennington County, to see approval of the Fair Board to install metal detectors in, at the fair. I see that as, as a contradiction to being a Second Amendment sanctuary county, and I feel that it's just one of the many dominos that has fallen that limits the areas where we can bear arms. So it's what I'm asking today, and I know it's been highlighted before, this contradiction between the sanctuary county that Pennington is and the authorization to the Fair Board to have metal detectors and basically limit firearms at the fair. I'm asking that you consider rescinding, or whatever the proper term is, removing that permission and, to the Fair Board. And I don't understand, understand your procedures exactly, but if you could take a vote on that today would be a request of mine, and alternately, at the very least, take a vote on that at your very next Commissioners' Meeting on December 19th. I think that's covered my bullet points. Is there any questions?
Patrick, I'll just communicate on that our legal team and our risk management are looking into this and gonna come up with a recommendation to bring to the Commissioners. And then once we get that, then I think we can, the, the Commission can make a decision on that and be able to communicate with the Fair Board themselves. So I just wanted to say that they're working on the information on that, and as any other legal thing, it's not something we want to rush. We want them to be thorough with it, come up with, and bring it forward with all the information so we can make an important decision to, but, and as you know, the Fair Board does meet once a month, so we'd have to, once we get that decision, we'll present it to them.
Very well. Also, do you know when you might expect that information to?
No, just as I said, they're, they're working on it. I think they're keeping Mr. Laster updated as much as possible. They're getting close.
I agree with you wanting to be thorough, and I want to be thorough also, but also time, the timeline's important also. So I'd ask that any ways to expedite that information to gather all the information that you need?
Yeah.
And expedite a vote and a decision on that would be appreciated.
Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you. Next I have Dean Marshall. Thank you. Next, I have Dean Marshall.
Hello, Commissioners. Same issue. We're not gonna, our hands are practically, our lives are practically in the hands of people who have guns essentially, unless you have armed guards around you. A few people do, but we're not gonna debate this and finish this philosophy about guns, et cetera. Dr. John Lott has written a book, More Guns, Less Crime. You may have heard of it. And I agree with him. More guns with responsible citizens equals less crime. We saw what happened in Maine recently, and if somebody had a gun or two in that situation, maybe some lives could have been saved. It makes me pretty disturbed when government prevents people from defending themselves essentially. You may have seen Tina Malali's little video that was about her trying to get, seeing about getting her gun. She says her life has been threatened three times, and she wants to be able to carry. And she was at the state fair there discussing why she couldn't, you know, with them. I think we got a state, you know, Central State's Fair. I think we got a state law that says that, you know, we have the right to carry. It seems like the board has agreed with that, and we are Second Amendment sanctuary by resolution of you gentlemen. And it seems like we're going against what you said. You're going against what you said to allow the Fair Board to do what they've, what they've done. And I understand you're studying it, so I'm glad to hear that. I have a sister, by the way, who lives in Vermont, a state not known for gun crime. They've had concealed carry there when I was there pretty much forever. And that goes against some people's way of thinking. If, you know, more people have guns, or we allow anybody to have a gun, people are gonna die because of that. And it just doesn't work that way. So I'm asking you to reconsider this. And as you said, Commissioner La Croix, get this thing studied, legality of it. It seems like the legality of it is the state laws, law supersedes what we might want to do. And so I'd ask you to enforce your resolution and the principle of it and get this thing changed at the state fairgrounds.
Thank you, Dean. Next, I have Taffy Howard.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. I am Taffy Howard, resident of Pennington County. I would say a me too on the fair issue. I'm gonna request that you do work to get it on the agenda and have a proper discussion about that well before the next fair comes up. We don't want this to be rushed at the last minute. You know, I too have been in the situation. When I was in Pierre, one time I got a text and it said, it just said, I know where you live. And there was stuff going on at the time, but, you know, I turned it over to DCI, whatever, and nothing ever came of it. But people shouldn't be deprived of the right of self-defense. And we are a sanctuary county. We are a constitutional carry state. We love our Second Amendment rights here. So I would ask you to seriously work to get that on the agenda. There were a couple other issues that I wanted to hit on that just came up during the meeting. I am concerned about the building issue. It does seem like, you know, maybe, and I do ask, where is this master plan? Because I would like to look at the master plan. But it seems like, it seems to me like we're in a rush to buy, buy, buy. You know, simply because an opportunity came up, we're gonna spend millions and millions of taxpayer dollars. And I appreciate having a master plan, but if things change, we need to be able to adapt and overcome changes. And maybe we don't need to spend the money that, that we are spending right now. So I would love to know where that master plan is. I also have a question. What is the marketing manager position at DBM? If anybody can answer that. We approved that, and they're getting over 80,000 a year. And I just, okay, I'll maybe talk to you guys afterwards, but I would really like to.
I think you can look at the agenda online, and all that stuff's attached. So if you go online, you can find all that, the DBM and all that, so it's attached.
Okay. Because personally, I don't know what we should be marketing in the county. The wheel tax came up. I strongly oppose the state blackmailing counties into imposing a wheel tax. That was wrong from the get-go. We've, somehow, we survived as a county for over 100 years, over 140, it was 145 years. We had no wheel tax. Somehow, we survived. And I would argue that we can still survive without this massive increase of taxes on individuals. I don't know about you guys, but we have numerous vehicles. So the wheel tax really does add up. We aren't a family that just has one vehicle. So I would just again ask you to reconsider that. It should not have been increased. Once it was at $2 a wheel, there was, as far as I'm concerned, there was no need to increase it. I mean, we jumped from 1.4 million last year to well over 3.4 million this year. That is off the backs of the taxpayers. And there are people struggling in this county. I don't know if any of you are, but there are people struggling to stay in their homes, to pay all the taxes that are being imposed on us. So I would ask that going forward, that that be looked at again, at least possibly lowering it back down. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Taffy. Next, I have Lawrence Thompson.
Good morning, Commissioners. Florence Thompson. I'm from Caputa. I'm representing South Dakota Citizens for Liberty. And I call your attention to an email that was sent to you by Tonchi Weaver, our new president. She's talking about the Fair Board policy with the Second Amendment issue. And we are also asking for you to schedule a public meeting so that we can fully address this problem. There are quite a few signatures, I understand, on some petitions, and we'd like to be able to present those to you. And so there are many, many people that are very concerned about this. And I think you understand how strong the Second Amendment support is in South Dakota for, politically. So please, please, schedule a meeting so that this can be heard and be responsive to what the citizens are saying. I know myself, just as a woman who's alone, going out in that dark parking lot, I have to leave my gun in the car. I don't feel very safe. And the metal detectors going in don't make me safer. Because for me, the dangers that I see is in the parking lots, which are dark, unlighted. And I think that's, that leaves me undefended. And I feel very vulnerable that having taken away my gun, that I can't carry that out in the parking lot. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Florence. And just for everybody's record, you heard what I said, but I will read Tonchi's email for the record.
Okay, thank you.
We did get an email from Tonchi Weaver, and this is what her message was. She says, my plan to attend the December 5th meeting has been thwarted by scheduling, I'll leave that out. But she, she had planned to ask to be put on the issue of the Fair Board policy on firearms on your next agenda. I have talked about this issue on the radio as well as during the public comment at your meeting. And it is clear by the feedback I have that had people care deeply about it. I believe that the sooner the issue is addressed, the Commission, the better. The potential fairgoers, concertgoers and vendors are planning their summer activities now and want to know what to expect of them to decide whether or not to attend the Central State's Fair in the future. This was from Tonchi Weaver. So I just wanted to read that into the record that we got since you brought it up. We do have one more speaker request form from Brian Filer. Did I pronounce that right?
Fireman.
Fireman, okay.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Commissioners. I too just wanted to say that at the fair, I felt my Second Amendment rights were infringed upon. And that I'm glad that you guys are looking at this issue and it is coming up. I'm a treasurer of the Pennington County Republican Party, and so I do represent the Pennington County Republican Party in this issue as well. We had a booth at the fair, and I don't know if you guys are aware, if you were, you had a, you used a different entrance, if you had a pass because you had a booth or something at the fair, and there was no metal detector there. So there was ways to get in the fair with a firearm. So I, I myself don't carry a firearm, but I'm sure glad that there are people out there that feel comfortable and have the training to use that. And I'm appreciative that Brian Mueller had deputies around there that were, but his deputies can't be everywhere all the time either. So I just wanted to say thank you for taking the time to listen to me. And I'm glad that you guys are looking into this, and I would like to see that on a future agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. With that, that closes our public comment period. So at this time, I'd look for about a 10-minute recess to have planning set up for the Board of Adjustments.
I'm moved.
Moved by Drews.
Second.
Second by Laster. Any discussion? Hear none? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion carries. Thank you. Now, we'll resume the session. I'd look for a motion to go into Board of Adjustments.
So moved.
Moved by Drews to go into Board of Adjustments.
Second.
Second by Laster. Any discussion? See none? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion carries. That'll bring up, at this time, we do have speaker request forms too on any planning items. So if you'd like to speak on one, please fill one out and turn one in. If you are the applicant or the representative, we automatically accept you. So with that, Meg.
Good morning, Megan Talmadge. afternoon, I think. No, it's still morning. Agenda item A is variance BA 23-16, and it is to allow a .04 acre lot in a residential district. The applicant is Pactola Heights LLC with Ben Fosland as the agent. This is a part of Pactola Heights subdivision, and the existing land use is a well lot. There is no flood hazard on the property. When considering variances, staff takes a two-pronged approach. They are both listed on the screen. Overall, this lot has existed in its current state since 1979, but staff sees no special condition to grant a variance. Multiple other well lots exist in the hills that were platted at a similar time. And this item is required for a, for the rezon and comprehensive plan for the same subdivision. That will be coming up later in this meeting. And so staff recommends denial. However, if the Board of Adjustment disagrees, staff requests one condition.
Anything else? Is the applicant available?
Yes.
Does he, would you like to say anything? Just need to identify yourself for the record. And if you have any comments, I'll ask the Commissioner if they have any questions for you.
Ben Fosland? Yeah, this is an existing well lot, and it's going to remain a well lot. And we're just, the, we've been working with county staff and Commissioner Roskneck on this. Everybody's been great to work with. We're just trying to get it moving in the right direction. And I think the recommendation was we would need a variance for this well lot. It's gonna remain a well lot.
Okay, good. So it's gonna remain a well lot, and it's what it's always gonna be. Is there any questions for the Commissioners?
No.
For Ben, Ms. Hagcock.
So we've had well lots that people developed on later. Is there any way to assure that this will stay a well lot? Megan?
The size of this well lot is .04 acres, and the condition attached is that they meet setbacks. There's no way to build on that well lot with the 25-foot setbacks required.
Thank you, Ms. Megan.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskneck.
So Ben, the well lot, the utility of the well lot is to provide a water source for the lots around that. And I assume you gotta be a certain distance from the well relative to safety concerns from the state. And, and you gotta be able to access the pump, if you have to pull the pump, and you're gonna have some electrical controls for the well. I dug up five comparable well lots in area subdivisions to show the Commission that well lots in these residential subdivisions, one range, they range from .07 to .52. So it's, most subdivisions that they're gonna provide central water, they have a well lot. There's no sense in making a well lot, three acres, because then you're just wasting 2.5 acres essentially that could be used for better development. So I have no problems with this particular request.
Do you have any further comments, Ben?
No, sir.
Okay. Any further comments from the Commission? Go to the Commission for a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made to approve variance BA 23-16, Pactola Heights LLC to allow a .04 acre lot in the residential district in accordance with Pennington County zoning ordinance with one stipulation that the lot maintain setbacks of the current zoning districts. Is that correct?
Correct.
Any further discussion? Hear none? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion carries. You know, I'd look for.
Move to adjourn as the Board of Adjustment. Reconvene as Board of Commissioners.
And moved by Drews to adjourn the Board of Adjustment, second by Laster. Any further discussion? See none? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion carries. Next, that brings us to the consent agenda, and I'll recognize Brittany.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Molitor, Planning Director. The Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on uncontroversial and routine planning and zoning items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. The consent agenda for planning and zoning contains the following item. Item B is a hard rock mining research update, and staff is recommending that the board accept the memo from the State's Attorney's Office on the update.
Okay. At this time, is there any member from the public who wish to remove item B from the planning consent agenda? See none. At this time, is there any Commissioner who wish to have one, have it removed from the consent agenda? See none. I would look for a motion.
Mr. Chair.
To approve consent agenda. Mr. Laster.
Move to approve the planning and zoning consent agenda as presented. Second.
Moved by Laster, seconded by Roskneck. Any further discussion? See none. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion carries. Next, this brings us to regular agenda items. The following planning and zoning matters, matters in our uncontested hearings are those which planning department has not yet received or provided comment contesting the item. The documents for each item have been reviewed by the Commissioners, and the decisions during these hearings will be made based on the information provided in the packet and the short presentation. If we receive comment contesting the item, the matter will be addressed in the same manner as a contested hearing. I'll recognize Megan.
Megan Talmadge, Plainer. Agenda item C is preliminary plan 23-24, and it's to reconfigure lot lines in order to create tract A revised and tract B revised of Homus subdivision. The applicant and owner is Marjorie Helgeson, trustee, and their servant, Vegas Davis Engineering. The current zoning is agricultural and rural residential district, and there is flood hazard on the property. There have been no significant comments on this request, other than a small correction from the Register of Deeds. And the applicant has obtained the variance and rezon requested in the layout plan. The variance was a subdivision regulation variance for the road, and the rezon was to rezon a small portion into rural residential. Tract A will still need an operating license, as that condition was not fulfilled in the layout plan. Uh, tract A will still need an operating license as that condition was not fulfilled in the layout plan. And the Planning Commission requested that an additional condition be added to provide clarification on the difference between the easement document provided in the packet and the, um, survey submitted for the plat. Um, and no lots will be created in this request. They're just adjusting lot lines. Um, overall, staff has found no significant issues with this request and recommends approval.
Thank you, Megan. So this comes with a recommendation from the Planning Commission for approv- approval of preliminary plat, Plan PPL twenty-three twenty-four with seven conditions, correct?
Yes.
Okay, is there any questions for Megan from the Commission? Any public comment? See none, I go back to the Commission for a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ross.
Move to approve preliminary Plan PPL twenty-three dash twenty-four with seven conditions.
Moved by Ross Connect.
Second.
Seconded by Drews. Any further discussion? See none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Now we come to Item D. And I'll let you read that, Megan.
Um, staff recommends that Item D and he, D and E be heard together as they are, um, the same properties involved.
Okay.
Move to suspend the rules on D and E.
Motion's made to suspend the rules by Hickok, seconded by, and take up Items D and E at the same time, and seconded by Mr. Drews. Any further discussion? See none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries.
All right, Agenda Item D and E is a rezon and comprehensive plan amendment request to change the current and future land use from rural residential to low-density residential. The applicant is Pactola Heights LLC, and their, um, agent is Ben Fosland. This is all of Pactola Heights subdivision was, which was created in nineteen seventy-nine. The existing land use is vacant or residential, and there is no flood hazard on the property. Um, the Planning Commission felt that these lots would not be suited for low-density residential due to the lot size, but staff recommends denial of this item based that the road is not complete.
Is there any questions for Megan from the Commission?
Well, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ross Connect.
Megan, are you in receipt of these photos that we have?
Yeah.
That the road's probably in a more finished state than it was two weeks ago.
Definitely. Um, those photos were provided to us yesterday, and from what the applicant has said, all that work had been done within four days.
Are they asking for a deviation from ordinance fourteen for that road? I think it's gonna have a twenty-two, twenty-four foot surface.
Yeah, so currently, um, the road that exists is the twenty-four foot surface, and that is their plan to build it to those ordinance fourteen standards. There is a portion to the north that may remain unfinished, in which case we'll have them vacated through the layout plan. But also in the layout plan, they're providing additional right-of-way for a turnaround. It's just that small portion to the north that is in question at the moment.
Okay, thank you.
Chair.
Ms. Hickok.
We had a lot of discussion at the Planning, uh, Commission. It was denied without prejudice, so they could finish the road. That was the biggest issue with the staff is finish the road. Would take them a little bit longer to finish the road anyway, and by the time they got, um, the road finished and good to go, that, um, they could bring back their layout plat, because otherwise it's backwards. You do the road and then bring the layout plat. Usually it's a plat with the road and everything else. So in order to be efficient and for the Planning, uh, Commission to be basically understanding what was going on next with the plat, including the Planning Department, usually, um, plat and then do the road. So it's kind of backwards here. It's good to know the plan before, uh, you approve it, basically the plat. So in my recommendation, I still think they need to finish the road. As, um, Commissioner Ross Connect said, they're still working on it. I still believe that you can deny it without prejudice and then bring it back and have the road finished, know the layout plat, and satisfy not only us, but the Planning Commission.
Thanks, Deb. And the recommendation from Planning Commission is to deny without prejudice on both of these, of the comprehensive plan, uh, as the road needs to, not, does not support low-density residential at this time. Is the applicant here? Do they have anything they want to say?
It's here.
The, the recommendations is to deny without prejudice just mean once the road's done, you come back and?
Mr. Chair.
I go.
Okay.
Good morning, Lyndon Bolt. I'm the guy kind of in charge of the road work out there, so. Um, I agree, I mean, the road is not finished, but it is, um, I would call it in our world substantially completed, and the guys are up there working on it right now. So, um, I would assume by this weekend, they will have it done and putting the culverts in is their plan. By Friday and Saturday, they're gonna put the culverts in, it's gonna be done. So it is quasi-substantially completed. So, um, maybe I do have the cart in front of the horse a little bit, just trying to move forward, you know? So, um, just like we talked about in the Planning Department, get your butt out of here and go build the road. And that's what we're doing, so. Um, I just want you guys to know that we're not diddle-daddling, and we are getting on top of building that road, and it is substantially completed. And you're more than welcome to come up and take a peek at it if you'd, if you'd like. And it is well beyond the county fourteen standards. The dirt up there is great, the rocks up there is great. Um, we're rolling the road as we're building it. It's a solid, solid, solid road. It's not a trail by any means. Um, it'll be twenty-four feet wide of asphalt millings plus a buffer on both sides. So it is, it is a very legit road that we're putting in. We're not trying to cut corners or put a trail in, so.
Oh, Chair. Well, thank, oh, thank you, Ben, and I just wanted to clarify what the motion was, and are you okay with, uh, to deny without prejudice, and then once it's completed and inspected, come back?
I would love to see it just approved today so we can move forward, but, you know what? I'm not the guy, that's, that's not my choice, sir. But I just wanted to explain to you where we're at, so that you can hopefully make the best decision on your part, so.
I do have Ross Connect first.
Uh, Mr. Chair. So Lyndon, I think when I first got involved, there was a timing question, and that's kind of why you probably want to move this forward, because, and that's what, uh, so, uh, the other question I would have when the road's finished, you said it's gonna have a asphalt.
Millings, yes, just like the rest of the development all has asphalt millings on it.
You know, I think the pictures show that in good faith, you guys are gonna finish that road and, uh, because, uh, timing seems to be an issue, I want to, I would support, uh, to approve.
Ms. Hickok.
Chairman, uh, I believe that they'll finish the road, but it's nice that we make sure that's in ordinance fourteen standards, as they say, and make sure Joe has approved that. Uh, number two, again, it's not, it's not just about the road, it's the plat. Usually on the plat you do first, and then you do the road and you do other things. So, uh, getting the cart before the horse, you did do the road first, not the plat. It just reassures us that in the Planning Department and the planners for Planning Commission that, um, you're gonna follow through with the next steps and not change anything in between. So for me, um, I agree with the Planning Commission. I don't think it's delaying you in a sense, because you're gonna still finish the road, and then you're gonna come back and with your plat, with agreement with the Planning Department, you're all on the same page. Because I've seen things change in between many, many times over. Um, and I just always, I'm at them, I always like to see the butt first, so.
I understand.
Mr. Drews.
So Megan, can I ask you a question on timing of the, of the plat? You've been working with them, obviously. Uh, so is that close, or?
Um, the layout plan should be finished this week if I stay on my timeline. And then from the layout plan, they would go to the preliminary plan, which needs to be heard at the Planning, uh, Planning Commission and also by the Board of Commissioners. Um, and then at that point, they would move on to their final plat. We're still a couple of months out. I'd say with the additional items that they would have to do for their planning.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions from the Commission? We did take these both up at the same time, but we'll have to take, uh, motion on these separately. Uh, do remind everybody that the recommendation is to deny without prejudice on both these.
Chair.
Ms. Hickok.
My, my motion would be to deny without prejudice, um, by the Planning Commission.
So we have motion by Hickok, consecuted by Laster, to deny without prejudice comprehensive plan CA twenty-three dash eleven as the roads do not support low-density residential, and this is Item D. Is there any further discussion? See none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed.
Aye.
Motion passes with one no. That brings us up to Item E. Is there a motion for Item E?
Motion to deny without prejudice.
Moved by Hickok to deny without prejudice to rezon RZ twenty-three sixteen. The roads do not support low-density residential at this time. Seconded by Lassiter. Any further discussion? See none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed.
Aye.
Motion carries with one no. Next, that brings us up to Item F. Marijuana business license.
Good morning, Commissioners, again, Brittany Molitor. Item F is marijuana business license ML twenty-two dash zero-one for M and M Medical Solutions. Timothy McMahon is the agent, and it's to allow the reapplication of a previously approved marijuana business license in a heavy industrial district. Uh, the reason this request is in front of you is, um, our ordinance only allows a conditional approval of a business license for one year. Um, since it was previously approved, um, it was the recommendation of our State's Attorney's Office and our office that they reapply for their conditional approval. Um, so they have another year to build the facility. Um, they might have been working with the current landowner on getting the road improvements in to access this parcel. Um, so it has taken a little bit, because it is a thirty-two foot wide road, um, that's at a heavy industrial standard. Um, so they are working with the current owner, um, on getting that in. So they won't be able to meet the conditional permit requirements, um, without the reapplication of this. So that's what they're asking for, is the reapplication of the conditional approval.
Okay. So any questions for Brittany? Any public comment? Go back to the Commission for a motion.
Move approval.
It's been moved to approve marijuana business license ML twenty-two oh one with three conditions. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
And seconded by Ross Connect. Any further discussion? See none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Brittany. Next, this brings us up to items from the Chair and Commission members. This is a time for individual members to bring forth ideas, our concerns to, to the full Board. Official action will not be taken on any items brought forth at this time. Direction may be given to bring items back before the Board for future consideration. I do have one item, Deb, I wanted to talk to you about, uh, the executive session, uh, training, uh, meeting. I've talked to the staff when we're coming up with, with some changes on the executive meeting with these employee stuff that we've done. So we're, we're looking at drafting something, bringing it to the Commission so we can have those exceptions in writing, and then what I'd like to do is take, if the Board passes that, take it to, uh, the Department Heads Meeting, and then give them that idea for discussion. I just want to check to see if that's acceptable for you.
I appreciate that, because, uh, when I'm saying that, I'm not saying you guys, I'm saying us.
Yeah.
For me, it just gives me more training and gets the staff. Uh, I've had some concerns with some of the staff saying stuff with the executive session and how we're supposed to bring it forward. I just always tell them to go to the Attorney's Office, but I think if there's a better process so they have an understanding of it, including us, I think it will settle a lot of stuff what we're talking about.
Because we do have a, uh, an item that's on our agenda for executive session.
Right.
We would, what we've been kind of talking about is like that item would have, be underneath a separate item. If there's no questions, this one may be a little bit different, because when you do wage exceptions.
Right.
But we, we work on those and try to find something to where we don't have to do it. If, I just wanted to make sure, I, I didn't ignore it, we've been working on it. I just wanted to pass it by you first to see if you're okay with.
I appreciate that, I just, the process and procedure is what I'm looking at, just so. If things don't need to be brought back there and they can be approved upfront, then it just makes sense. And then the public's in the know of what we're doing at all times without, um, sometimes they don't understand, uh, Ms. Howard just brought up today, DBM and some of that other stuff, so she has an understanding to ask the question, so.
So with, with your consent, I'll move forward with that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Laster.
Um, something for us to consider. We, we heard a lot of citizens today, we've heard a lot of citizens over the last couple of meetings. Um, they're concerned about the fairgrounds and the Second Amendment, um, violations that's, uh, that they believe has happened. I think we might really want to consider putting that on the agenda for, for discussion. At least to let them have an opportunity to bring forward what they feel, uh, that we need to hear, and potentially asking us for, um, I, I don't know if they're gonna ask for action or whatnot, but I do believe that, um, we're seeing it. Um, they mentioned something about petitions, so, I mean, it might be wise to just give them a designated, um, time on the agenda.
Mr. Laster, that's why I met with, uh, staff earlier in the week, part of last week, and that's, and they gave me an update on what they're working on. I think they're close, but I'd like to have them come forward and give their presentation of what their findings are. I think it's looking positive before we, I don't want to rush anything to, I'd rather have all the information, because that, that would give us something to, uh, go to the Board with.
Have a timeline, uh, Commissioner.
I, I didn't get a timeline, they just said they were close. So I'm assuming probably around the first of the year would be the, the first meeting in January is what I'm, I would be shooting for, but I don't want to make any guarantees.
We're just, sorry, Chair, to interrupt you.
I, is that acceptable to you, Travis? I mean, they've been, I think we're working with the risk manager and?
Right, I mean, I, that's what Jay and I were talking about, why I was running a little late. He and I were talking about what we're working on for staff being able to carry on county grounds. You know, the, our, our county, um, staff members, you know, being able to carry like a state. Um, staff members allowed to carry while they're on duty, but that's not their primary role. That's not their role to be able to do that. I understand that piece, I'm just talking about the other piece, or you're saying that we're gonna lump all of that together, what the county is doing to allow our, our, um, staff members to be able to carry along with how we're gonna move forward.
I think that's a fair assessment, because I'd like to know what, what we're gonna have going first and present to the Commission so that we all have that, that information, then we can move forward with the second part. I think we've got time with the Fair Board to work with that, but I think once we get that piece done, because there's been some different opinions and, and recommendations from lawyers, you know what I'm saying? So we have, yeah, so we, if we have a clear, I'd rather have us as a Commission have a clear picture from our staff before we start moving forward on that part.
Well, I would just encourage us to push to have, edit the earliest convenience. If it's can't be done by the end of the year, then at least the first month of the year.
I, I will check on it again this week.
Okay, thank you.
So Chair, um, just one more thing, when we're talking about open meetings, um, you can't have your phone on, on the dais, so everybody knows that. Your phone's not supposed to be on texting or doing anything on your phone up here at any time. So, um, just so we're all in the same understanding of that. Some people are still turning their phones on during Commission meetings.
Mr. Chair. I just have to say that I've got two medical monitors that are connected to mine.
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
I heard Mr. Ross Connect first, and then I'll go.
I got a calendar on mine that I, when we talk about the meetings and committees that we belong to, that's, that's on my calendar, which is on my phone.
And my hearing aids are controlled by my phone.
Okay.
It's when people, the public, don't understand that, but you still, whether you're looking at, your hearing aids make sense, but when you're looking at your calendar, the public doesn't know that. It doesn't say, in case you have to look at your phone to see your schedule, um, it says, "Don't turn your phones on." Uh, we had the same issue with people on their, uh, the, not here, but at the city, typing on their computers, and people were questioning that. So it's just not, to be fair, it's not okay to turn your phone on and type, because people out there do not know what you're typing, neither do we, so.
Well. Well, I'll agree with that. There's no texting or emailing while you're on the dais. I do believe we're, we've got a variety of comments right here. But we're very clear, there's no texting or emailing while you're on the dais at all.
Mr. Chair.
Mr.?
In the future, I will leave my phone in my truck and I'll look at my calendar. I'll do that all beforehand, so I will not need my phone, period, when I go through that door.
I appreciate that. Commissioner Roskinak, because this is your second warning on using your phone at the dais, sir.
I didn't think that was a warning. I thought that was just a comment. But from my understanding is we're very clear, no texting or emailing while on the dais. With that, is there anything else? Moving forward, we'll go to meetings and committee reports, and I'll go to Mr. Lassiter.
All right. So the Tana PFOS BFOA Community Hall, first and foremost, it was well-attended, this room. It wasn't fully packed, but there was a few chairs open, but there was quite a few people here. A lot of interest in it. And even since then, I've actually had other individuals that didn't know about it but are in the areas, were asking questions about it. And they plan on attending the town hall that we are going to be hosting in March of '28. But the committee, the group that was here, SADIDA, EPA, all the agencies that were involved wanted me to express their thanks for opening up our chambers to allow the public to come in so we could give a lot of information to a lot of the individuals that are impacted by the PFOS BFOA water contamination. And they appreciate just the ability to have this place, to have them come in so we can have the internet access for them to be a part of it as well as a large open area. So just wanted to pass on their thanks for being willing to let them come out here.
Thank you, Travis. Mr. Drews.
So back on November 28th, the compensation committee met. You heard the recommendations from that this morning. I would just add that the wage scale study is drawing to a conclusion with an expected completion in March. November 29th, at the Elevate Meeting, numerous projects were talked about, and Dr. Ann Bowman gave a presentation on Western Dakota Tech and all the various programs they offer, including a two-year degree in nursing. They offer many educational opportunities to both the non-traditional and traditional student. And then on December 2nd, I did attend the Keystone Chamber Annual Meeting. It was great to meet some of the business community from Keystone and had some, a very enjoyable evening.
Thank you, Mr. Drews. Mr. Roskinak?
On the 27th of November, I attended the Hill City Council Meeting where I got to meet the new temporary mayor, Mike Virtue. That'd be Tony Virtue's father. It was a good meeting there, again, giving the county some exposure that commissioners willing to take some time off and just see what's going on in a local environment setting. The 29th, I attended a forest planning symposium, which was basically a primer for the Black Hills National Forest Plan Revision. We had a lot of private stakeholders as well as public stakeholders. Some of the topics were the planning rule going back to 2012. That was kind of the benchmark of the last time that there was any significant planning done for the Black Hills National Forest and how we're going to go from there as we move forward with our, in the current process of the establishing a fair and equitable forest plan for the Black Hills National Forest. Another topic was forest resilience, resistance, and restoration, and then consideration for reducing the long-term mountain pine beetle. It's not there now. Well, it is there now, but it's just not in epidemic forms. It really never leaves. Then there's a case study on the Flathead National Forest Plan Revision. We've been, to me, we've been struggling with this forest plan revision because we just haven't had a forest supervisor. We've had a lot of intermediates. But with that being said, I think we could have made better progress on this forest plan revision, which means Scott are point of contact for Pennington County. So on Zoom was the folks that did the Flathead National Forest Plan and how they worked with the commissioners of the Flathead County, I believe that's the county, and how smooth that went. And that's, and the thing about that Flathead National Forest is pretty comparable to the Black Hills National Forest because you have the tourism, you have the logging, you have the recreation, you have same characteristics of timber, landscape, topography. So that was very educational and hopefully there's a good takeaway from the private end, private stakeholders that went to that particular meeting. And I also attended the Keystone Chamber meeting. I agree with Gary that it's good to get out there and show folks that we're interested in city chamber on a local level. That should, I think that's it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ron. Deb?
Mine was the planning commission. We had some good discussion, as you've seen, from the deny without prejudice. We talked about the VHR ordinance. At least one person was very upset that we did not pass it and work was done. And I understood that, but I also know they're recommending body. And I did say our decisions and why we sent, and voted the way our commission moved forward on. Many agreed with that we should have maybe passed it to do in-house, and that made sense to me. And that the fees should be as high as they were was one of the commissioners. And the other ones agreed because of all the work you have to do with the VHRs. But I truly believe with the fee can be different if it's done in-house. So that would save us time and energy as well. So this is kind of in agreement in one sense and the other disagreement because, like I said, if you do it in-house, the fee doesn't need to be as high. So good discussion there and very good planning commission.
Thank you. I'm going to look at my phone. My notes are. I had last Friday the WIR Conference, Public Lands Forum Call. And these are difficult to do when you're, they're on Zoom. But some of the stuff, one of the top highlights that they had is they're planning for the WIR workshop. They're coming up with ideas to have for the workshop. And it's going to be on outdoor recreation, wildfire enforcement management's going to be one, outlook for drought and water supplies and wildfires. And also NACO and Counties 101, form of government for professional management and ethics, affordable and desirable housing, and also economic forecasts for the West. That was one of them. One of the other ones that they're working on is something similar to what Mr. Dyberg is trying to do with the pill. They're trying to get that to where they don't have to go back every year and ask for it. And they've got bipartisan support on a bill that will try to make it to where it's just renewed every year. You know, those are the highlights of that meeting. They did give a legislative update on what's happening up on the Hill. And I think most of that's been pretty much covered in the news. So it would make no sense to relive in some of that. So that's my report from the NACO WIR Public Lands Conference Call. Next, we have on our agenda approval of the vouchers.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lassiter.
Moved to approve vouchers, the amount of $266,786.22.
It's been moved by Lassiter, seconded by Roskinak. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. As I mentioned earlier, we do have one wage exception request. The information was in your packets, Commissioners. Does anybody, if there is no questions on this, we can deal with this now or we can take it to executive and have the discussion.
Chair.
Ms. Hancock.
I would ask if it's supposed to be an executive session or not. Is our state's attorney's here? And was it, if we're taking it out of executive session, does it need to be noticed as it is on this paper? Ahead of time, instead of just the motion?
Well, it is wage exception request, and normally that is required for executive session.
Right. Well, that's what I'm saying. So I'm asking the question, is it full information? Do we have to say ahead of time because we're taking that executive session and this paper is opened up for discussion, all the paper? Or are we just doing it based on DBM? Okay.
Mr. Alderman, we got a question on the executive session for wage exception request. Whether, I think the last couple of meetings, we've actually approved it without going into executive session as long as there was no discussion on the personnel. So Ms. Hancock's question is, should all that stuff be, if we're going to take it up without executive session, be on our agenda? Is that correct? Ms. Hancock?
Just wondering if all this could be out of executive session, except the name, and then, and maybe even the name because it's a request and it's something that is going to be put out of executive session in the first place. Someone had questioned me last time if we followed the right process of how we just came out and didn't put the packet or notice the packet. We just read the DBM at the end. Does the whole packet have to be out of executive session? Does this have to be read or does this have to be noticed to the public like this? Or is it just noticed with the, we just read the DBM at the end? That is my question.
I'm not sure I understand the question. Jay Alderman of the State's Attorney's Office. If you, if you have an executive session packet, then that's confidential. And if you go into executive session with that packet and you address the topic that is allowed to go in, that's confidential. If you want to take action, you come out of executive session, you put a motion on the floor and you pass it. So I'm not sure.
So if we don't go in executive session, we're just all in agreement. We don't have to notice the packet or anything. We can just say, okay, whatever we're going to come out of executive session to say. Because it wasn't something we need to discuss, we already knew it.
Yeah, you can come out of executive session and just put a motion on the floor. So are you saying you need to bring your documents out of executive session and make them part of the public record?
Well, I didn't know if you weren't going to do an executive session. It's not confidential anymore. Is the packet open for discussion? Meaning, can this be discussed if it's not confidential anymore? It's going to be out of executive session, and it doesn't say confidential. It says it on there, but it says, bottom line, what I'm saying is, if you have a packet, you don't want to go in executive session. We don't believe it's executive session anymore. Should have been noticed like the last two we did on the agenda. I'm just trying to get clarification, Jay, because if it's not executive session anymore, we could come out here and discuss it without.
Is there a reason why you're not going into executive session on this topic? Is it not one that belongs? And I don't know anything about it, so.
That's what I'm asking. Is it or is it not? And is all the information on here executive session?
Well, I don't know. I don't know.
The packet itself has to do with personnel, personal information, so that is executive session. My point, why, I believe why we've not done before is the commissions reviewed it beforehand. And if they have any, don't have any questions, do we really need to go into executive session at the same time?
So executive session is a may, as you all know. You don't have to go into executive session unless there's a statute that requires it. So if you have a topic that in advance of the meeting you felt was executive session because it involved personnel, litigation, contracts, whatever the case may be, and then you decide, actually, you know what, we don't need to go into executive session. I mean, typically, we're used to having an agenda item. If the.
Can I say my point? So this is all going to be on the public record anyway. Am I correct? Her position, her new position, the employee, we will come out of executive session and talk about this. This is not talking about her qualifications on this paper. It's just saying we have an exception. That's why I was asking you, if there's an exception, why are we taking them in the back? I know we're looking at it, but we did it last time. So all of this is public information anyway.
So you're saying, Commissioner Hancock, that the topic should not have, under any circumstances, should go into executive session, yet I'm hearing others say that it should or could.
Okay. I didn't say any circumstances. I'm saying in this and the last ones that we brought out, should they be noticed like this if we don't have to take them in executive session? Because this is public information, and when we read this, it's the same information that's on the front. Meaning, this whole thing doesn't have to do with qualifications or.
I don't know if it does. Is that just your opinion or is that the opinion of the commission?
I think what we need to do is, we're working on that draft, Deb. I think we'll just take this in executive session like it's supposed to be because it has that form. And then we draft what we talked about, bring it back to the commission so we're clear on which ones should be and shouldn't be, if that's acceptable.
Mr. Chair.
You done, Deb?
I just disagree on this needs to be executive session. So on this, I won't have to hear this when you're talking about this and your next item will be fine.
Mr. Roskinak?
I'm going to make a motion to move the goal in executive session pursuant to South Dakota Codeified Law 1-25-2, one for personnel issues.
And may I, Mr. Chairman?
I got a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Al.
If in the future, there are items that could go into executive session, but you decide, this would be the cleanest way, you decide in advance that, given the nature of it, you know what, we don't have to. Or the individual who would have some say in that, such as the subject of the matter, is fine with it being discussed out in the open, even though it could technically go into executive session, then you might as well put it on the agenda, actually create an agenda item for it because you know that in advance.
Right.
But I don't know enough about the topic right now. I may disagree with you, Commissioner Hancock, that if it is discussing an individual and touching upon their performance, character, what are some of the other quality, then that absolutely can go into executive session. That would not be illegal, and then you could go in. And I'm understanding that this topic has some of that, so.
So Chair, can I answer? So I guess that's why at that point, when I requested a while ago to have the, basically, the state's attorney in there to make sure that they were making clarifications, that's why I sent something to the state's attorney at this point for clarification. I'm just trying to figure out what should and shouldn't be. And then last time, we just decided we weren't going in executive session. So I didn't know the policy and procedure, which you're saying now, and I agree with you. I agree that if we're going to discuss it or we decide beforehand, you can't just come at me at the same day or come to me the same day and say, well, I guess we decided not to do that. I didn't do that. All I thought is, I had a discussion on executive session. At the time until today, I did not know that this didn't need to go in executive session. Otherwise, I might have asked you or been planned ahead so other commissioners would know that. So that's my concern. So you're right, Jay. It's, it should be simplified by knowing ahead of time.
And you can add something, as you know, you can add something to the agenda the day of the commission meeting before you settle the agenda. It's, and it's, that's allowed. But it's encouraged that you try not to do that just because of the short notice that that would provide. But you can do that. So even up, right up to the moment of approving the agenda for the day's meeting, you can add something. So you could take it off of executive session and add it to that day's agenda. You don't typically do that for the reason that you want to give more heads up to the public in the agenda that's being approved. But you can do that, or preferably if you know in advance, you just make it an agenda item in advance. But this item today, I understand you have, it's personnel-related. You are discussing the qualifications, performance, et cetera, of an individual, a human being specifically, as it relates to pay or where to put them on the DBM, whatever. That is definitely a personnel topic. Commissioner Hancock is, I guess, shaking her head. She doesn't think that's what's happening today. And so I don't know enough about it to say anymore, I guess. happening today, and so I don't know enough about it to say anymore, I guess.
I think we do have a motion on the floor to go into executive session for personnel.
And Jay, I don't mean that disrespectfully, it's that the qualification and performance I was talking about is not on this paper. It's just changing a compensation exception, so thank you for your justification.
Okay. With that, all in favor go into executive session, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I will not go in for the first one. I think I already know my decision. The second one, you can call me in when you're ready. Thank you.
Look for a motion to come out of executive session.
Moved to.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Hickok, seconded by Ross Connect. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Mr. Ross Connect.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve Tricia Larson from LPNM 2, step 2, $24.01 an hour to RN. Mr. Chair, move to place Tricia Larson at DBM M4, step 4, 2967, an hour effective November 26, 2023.
Moved by Ross Connect, seconded by Drews. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I'd just like to point out that as Larson is moving from LPN to, and she got her RN degree. Appreciate it.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Lester, seconded by Hickok. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.